Ready with your recording, I'll call order. Let me know, Eric.
Okay.
You ready?
Yep, recording.
I call to order the October 6th, 2020 meeting of the Sewer Planning and Zoning Commission. This is a regular meeting. And I believe that there is call in numbers available on the city website if you want to call in with questions. We are allowing minimal public into the room. You do have to temperature taken for and a number for contact tracing. So at this time, I will ask Commissioner Demas to lead us in the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Swan and Mr. Weisel, can you hear us okay?
Yes.
Oh, you're on mute. We'll move on. We're at roll call, please.
Demas?
Here.
Sees?
Here.
Hatfield?
Here.
And Sher Ekland?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. At this time, we're at citizens comments on any subject except those items that are scheduled for public hearing. Do we have anyone signed in to speak on any items not in public hearing?
We did not receive any emails and we have no one signed in.
Thank you.
Not to public hearing.
And that moves us to number five, the approval of the agenda and consent agenda. What are the wishes of the commission? I need a motion for the approval.
I'm going to approve the agenda and the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Hatfield, second by Demas. Any discussion? Any additions or deletions to the agenda? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to item six, special reports and presentation.
Madam Chair, I'd like to say on the consent, unanimous consent for the approval.
Yeah.
We'll be going with that. And on the consent is the approval of the September 1st, 2020 regular meeting minutes.
Thank you.
A city administration report now?
Yes.
Couple things, I want to first send out our condolences to the Ward family. Sue Ward with historic preservation. Her husband passed away last week. So I'd like to send her condolences. I'd like to send my congratulations to Assistant Planner Assistant Andy Bacon and their new baby girl that was also born last week. And then just give you guys a little update. We know that it's already out. Eric is planning on leaving the city. He has offered to stay until we get somebody hired. And if we don't get somebody hired by the first of the year, then we will move forward with it. He will be leaving then. And I just want everybody to know that. We've been working, I attended a virtual APA, which is an advocacy planning association. We did Capitol Hill. Normally, we're at Capitol Hill, but we did it virtually via Zoom. And over 400 planners attended Capitol Hill. We were able to meet with our congressmen and our senators, which is really a great opportunity for planners. That happened last week. It was over two period. We are currently working on multiple projects, Jesse Lee Home being one of them, as well as the B E for revitalization and then working to some different planning opportunities. We have hired a temporary planning assistant, Brooke Estes. She'll be here for the next couple of months. And we have her working on our main project is trying to make our files be electronic. So we have a lot of scanning that is happening right now in our office and she's doing an amazing job. And that's all I have.
Thank you. And item six B is other reports, announcements and presentations. Does Admin have any additional?
Just that like tonight for our meeting, a reminder that anybody that wants to attend the work session with the flood board for the Lowell Canyon Water Diversion System will be October 19th and we'll be sending out notices for that to be able to call in. And then at the back of your packet, one thing I just want to point out is on the tent is recycling day and we've listed it on the back of the packet.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to give a quick report from the Kenai Peninsula Borough Planning Commission. We did have an issue that Sewer may lose their seat on there, but the planning department recommended to the mayor that Sewer keep their seat. Soldatna will not have a seat for a year and then they come back on in the next group that somebody has to leave it for a year. And we'll find commissions, Title 20 subdivisions and Chapter 2021 hearing and appeals. And there were many items on there. It's kind of a, a lot of it's just cleanup, but there are some new processes. For example, flats must be from a licensed surveyor from now on. Just a good old boy can't bring in a drawing with the easements and everything written on it, but it has to be from a licensed surveyor. And this one might affect the city if we wanted to, that it amends K P B 2025-050A to recognize that plating powers have not been delegated, but that such powers may be delegated to the cities upon request. And it would amend 2025-050B and E to eliminate the 49-day deadline for city advisory planning commissions review of preliminary flats and amend K P B 2025-050F to state that a preliminary flat may not deviate from a preliminary flat unless the city has approved the revision. And that the cities, another one was that cities can determine the location of their utility easements. We've had a lot of talk about utility easements over the years here. And there's a whole new section on vacations. And so this draft ordinance was sent to all the cities on the peninsula on June 29th. And in our packet at the last meeting, Homer P and Z had their minutes where they discussed it and they submitted some recommendations for some changes. Soldatna P and Z actually held a work session with the borough on it and wrote a resolution approving this ordinance. The ordinance will be on the October 12th meeting next Monday night for the planning commission, for the planning commission to recommend approval at the assembly. So it will go from the Borough Planning Commission onto the introduction at the assembly and then a second meeting would be to vote it through. So if you want to read that ordinance or make comment on that ordinance or think that the planning commission here at Seward should make comment on it, we'd have to get on it, but we could do, send in a lay down for Monday night's meeting on it. And you can find that ordinance in the package from September 28th on the Borough website under planning. And that's the only thing I wanted to report on from the borough at this time. I've got something at the end of the meeting as well. So anyone else have any reports, announcements or presentations? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to public hearings. Item seven A, unfinished business items requiring a public hearing. Resolution 2020-08 of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Seward, Alaska granting a conditional use permit to John Weisel II to construct and operate two or more apartment units within a commercial building located at 2013 Fifth Avenue in the Central Business District. Staff report, please.
Madam Chair and Commission, as stated, property owner John Weisel has applied for a conditional use permit. The City of Seward Planning and Zoning Department has reviewed the application and went off of the, sorry, I put my paper away. Just giving a little background on our review criteria, it is, the use is consistent with the purpose of the chapter and the purposes of the zoning district. The value of the adjoining property will not be significantly impaired. The purpose used in, is used in harmony with our comprehensive plan. Public services and facilities are adequate to serve the purpose, their proposed use. The proposed use will not be harmful to public safety, health, or welfare. And any and all special, specific conditions deemed necessary by the commission to fulfill the above-mentioned conditions shall be met by applicant. These may or may not include limited to measures relative to access, screen, site development, building design, operation, and use, or similar aspects related to the purpose. With C U Ps, we like to give you the background as well as list of conditions that we put into the resolution. So the first one is the use consistent with the purpose of the chapter and it has met all the requirements or has been met or shall be required for conditions. The adjoining property, we did not see that it would significantly be impaired. And the conditions that we listed, I'll go through one at a time. They are on page five, just so everybody's following along. Prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall be required to replat the property in accordance with Seward City Code Section 121030 and shall furnish certified copies of the final plat to community development building inspection departments. Existing entry stairs is a remnant of the non-conformity structure and must be reconstructed out of the right of way with new construction per section City Sewer Code 1510315 F2. All construction shall meet the current International Building Code, International Fire Code, and including all accessibility requirements provided within the International Building Code. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, a preliminary plat shall be submitted to the community development department. The applicant shall obtain a professional architectural code study to address any of the existing foundations, as well as any potential use of studio apartments as short-term rentals in a commercial building. Structural and architectural stamped engineered drawings shall be provided by the building official and should be provided, approved, sorry, approved by the building official. They will also show the final mix of uses as appropriate approved within a conditional use permit. Sprinkle and alarm plans if required for the use must be also approved by the building official. The applicant shall submit a dimensioned site plan identifying total required onsite parking spaces for the residential uses. The vehicle ingress and egress route and delivered access of egress for service vehicles. Number five, the applicant shall coordinate with Public Works and obtain a right-of-way permit prior to any work in the right of way. The applicant shall continue to work with staff through the building permit process to address and accomplish any required upgrades to the public utilities if needed. The applicant shall start a job order with the electric department and work with those staff in connecting to services. Animal slash bird resistant dumpsters slash containers shall be approved or provided at all garbage and wreckage for the life of its use. Construction waste debris shall be removed weekly and upon completion of the construction. Per Seward City Code 1510325F, an approved C U P shall last six months from the date of approval. If the use for which the permit has, was issued has not been implemented or a building permit obtained, the commission shall grant a six-month extension upon finding the circumstances have not changed significantly since the date of the initial permit. Modification of the final approval of the condition use permit may upon application, upon application by the committee be modified by Planning and Zoning Commission. This falls in line when, when changes to the conditions cause the conditional use to no longer conform in the standard approval. To implement a different development plan conforming to the standards for its approval and the modification plan shall be subject to a public hearing and a fee, filing fee set by City Council Resolution. I'll let Planner Eric finish up with his portion of the staff report.
So since the last meeting when I was postponed, Mr. Weisel has submitted new answers to his questions rather than the one-word answers that were on the original application. He submitted a new concept plan, which included some changes from a regular type apartment to a studio apartment size. He has submitted a parking diagram, which, the parking diagram shows three full-size parking spots. When, when we look at that, it's not possible to do more in that back alley. The excess space was designated as the ingress knee grass for deliveries and is a trash area. Let's see. So the conditions that we're recommending have to do with the staff recommendations from other departments as well as previous requirements for a C U P of a mixed-use building, such as the architectural review. And because there is concern about the foundation, that would be involved in an architectural and structural review. Other than that, not, not much has changed. There also in the application, he did send a statement under V J plumbing, or V J heating, excuse me, about his, so the stated possible leak to the heating, the oil tank, heating oil tank. Staff recommends based on these conditions and the fact that the the use meets the zoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan based on the promotion of infill development within the downtown area and also the strategic plan which wants to promote infill development. Staff recommends approval with the conditions that miss Wild at all.
Do you have any staff report?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I will open public hearing on this item. Do we have anyone signed in or any public comments submitted through the proper channels?
We have Mr. Weisel on the phone. We have three emails that were received to be read out and Mark Colstead has signed in to speak.
So we will start with the applicant. Mr. Weisel, did you have any opening statements?
I do.
You may go ahead. Say your name and address for the record, please.
My name is John Weisel II. My address is City Limits. Yeah, please allow me to answer the questions that arose during the application process for our conditional use permit. I want to start by explaining the building structure. I intend to build a three-story building as shown on the architectural drawing. The three-story building is to have two retail units and four nightly apartment rentals, or it could be built with three retail units and three nightly apartment rentals. The floor plan of the building is flexible, but the layout of the units stays the same. Please be attached. Parking. There are four parking spots access from the back alley per city code. A parking space must be 18 feet by nine feet. We are asking for a variance of one foot narrower, 18 foot by 18, 18 foot by eight foot for a fourth parking spot for a compact car. So we can develop four one-bedroom apartments, which will be less than 500 square feet. We are also flexible to build three retail units and three one-bedroom apartments if the parking space variance is not granted to us. And just like the nearby businesses, we would like to take advantage of street parking for our businesses too. Building height. The height of the building is 33 feet, meets the city height restrictions. With disposal, we have four roll-up trampings, which is adequate for our building size. Emergency vehicle access, emergency vehicle could park, could parallel park on the developed parking lot behind the building. Emergency vehicles can parallel park even if there are parked vehicles. Please see page three of parking structure layout. And last, I would like to respond to the false accusation Mark Colstead made about damaging a fuel tank during the demolition of the old building and causing environmental pollution.
Mr. Weisel?
As a licensed and reputable plumber, I personally inspected the battery tank to be empty and the tank intact and there was no spill. The development of the proposed project will benefit the businesses around by giving them more exposure, promoting trade. We welcome and rent, retail takes the businesses, which will benefit the Seward community and which will hold a valid business license issued by the City of Seward in the state of Alaska. We are already doing preliminary market research and we're finding out that a new modern place is easy to fill in downtown. Thank you for the consideration of our application for conditional use permit.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Mr. Mark Colstead.
Mr. Colstead, you may need to move a little closer, like stand between Eric and Jackie.
Do you want to speak or?
Well, I, that was my question. I called Eric and said, I didn't realize the process of asking it for postponement was part of the public hearing. And so, so if he reads it and has 30 seconds left, I would like to address, but if he doesn't have any time left after, I know I can't.
Okay, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and have Planner Eric read Mr. Colstead's email into the record.
Okay.
And do we have a timer set?
And if there's any swell, we'll laugh at that.
Thank you.
October 2nd, 2020, Planning and Zoning Commission, Seward, Alaska. Commissioner, Chair, Ms. Ekland and other members of Sewer Planning and Zoning Commission. I would like to respectfully request a postponement to unfinished business. Item A1, Resolution 2020-08, scheduled to be heard October 6th, 2020. And also request a work session to be scheduled prior to the rescheduling of this item. This development could precede, could be precedent-setting for other development in the City of Seward. Concerns about, one, does this reflect the intent of Seward's comprehensive plan? Two, negatively affect adjacent properties? Three, meet expectations of community visually in relation to architecture and beautification? And four, should buffering landscaping or art be required to be incorporated in the design? Five, has a uniform fire code approved wall systems that incorporate glass into firewalls requirement? And six, how the use of existing foundation poured in the 1940s made with pit run aggregate, a concrete mix and rebar insufficient to meet today's codes can be engineered to safely accommodate the proposed structure? These are only a few reasons that prevent my request for postponement and a work session scheduled allows, allowing members of the city council, mayor, members of historic preservation commission, members of the downtown business district, adjacent property owners, as well as other concerned citizens to participate in needful conversation with the developer and the commission prior to any approval. Thank you for considering this request. Sincerely, Mark S. Colstead.
Mr. Colstead, you have two minutes.
If you could just stand between Ms. Wild and Eric.
And I'll try to be real brief since I was a, good evening, Madam Chairman and members of the commission. I'm Mark Colstead, Hotel Sewer 221 Fifth Avenue. Eric's read my request to postpone, excuse me, your decision this evening to allow for a work session to be scheduled, allowing for more input into development before this move forward or denied by Planning and Zoning Commission. Please do not approve this application tonight. This development is setting precedent for future of Seward. Have not read the comprehensive plan, but the beauty of Seward and sure is not overlooked or intended to be preserved. This building will saturate the lot, not taking into account Seward's beauty. This development does not incorporate any beautification, landscaping, artwork, buffering, or complement Seward's historic architecture. This building is not complimentary to and has proposed, I believe, negatively affects the adjoining property values. This concept building being presented through your approval is wrong for Seward. Please do not let this site development set a precedence in harm to Seward's future. I urge you to not approve this conditional use request at this time and instead host a work session addressing the broader implications of this application. Why are you and I in Seward and why have you so graciously agreed to serve this commission? I would say one of the greatest reasons we're here is because of Seward's beauty. I thank you for being here to keep it that way now and the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next public speaker or email, please.
Next email.
Thank you. Start with the name and address of the person so we have that in our line before you start reading.
Kevin Lane, chef, owner of the Cookery LLC, 10-5-2020. To City of Seward P and Z Commission. This letter is in reference to the C P application for 213 Fifth Avenue by John Weisel. As a next-door neighbor to this dilapidated, dilapidated building for the past five-plus years, I would really love to see a new and improved building in that spot. I do have a few concerns, though. Parking during the summer season especially, parking is a challenge to say the least. New businesses and/or residential space, while welcomed, will add that, add to that challenge. In Mr. Weisel's application and the P and Z agenda statement, it states building with three studio apartments, but the drawing shows two apartments, which is a two or three. In addition, in the drawing, the retail and office space state C sheet A 2.3 if this unit is to be laid out as a residential unit. Is the intention to turn these spaces into residential or nightly rooms? Obviously, that would change parking requirements. Another concern is access to the parking area. The alleyway is quite busy through the summer with deliveries, waste pickup, and residential traffic. I worry about the increased traffic through, through our parking lot between the two buildings. Cookery future property use. I suppose this is much as a question as a concern. Would Mr. Weisel's points adversely affect any future potential for our property? I believe he is on zero lot line and drawing has windows on the south side. Would I be able to build to my north lot line in the future? You're looking to expand our building and one of the options would be to build up to the north lot line. Would I be able to build a three-story building in the future? Obviously, this would be a concern for future plans and possibly affect the resale potential of property. I do hope to see improvements in that space, but I also hope Mr. Weisel respects the community and businesses that already exist.
Thank you. Next submission should be read at this meeting.
Okay.
You're ready?
Or do you want me to? Want to take it over?
I agree.
Okay. Hit start.
Okay. Mary Colstead, 907-242-6600. Mary Colston, 907-242-6600. Oh, in Seward.
In City Limits, yes.
In City Limits. Opposed and request postponement and workshop regarding Resolution 2020-08 of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Seward, Alaska. As a multiple property owner, that will be negatively affected by this resolution. I am opposed to granting a conditional use permit for a mixed-use CUP with three apartments. Respectfully, council, I appreciate your time and consideration in reviewing this matter and reaching a decision in the best interest of Seward's community. In review, please consider these concerns. Mr. Weisels proposed a plan that is a concept that opens questions and concerns for the future look of the historic downtown district. This plan is predicated on building on existing thirty-by-sixty-five foundation that is built on the south property line, which will need to be qualified structural as we know. We are already aware that zoning does not allow windows in a building built on a lot line or in the setback. Yet his plan shows windows on the south wall, which is built on the lot line, and the proposal does not provide the required information for acceptance of this exception. I would ask that the information was provided for review before acceptance of the proposal. This conceptual design is in direct violation of codes and appears to be flawed. Another consideration is a CUP proposal also does not take into consideration landscaping, beautification, or design that would add to the Seward downtown appeal. It saturates the property and detracts from the historic small-town appeal. In review of the new design, it requests approval for three apartments, but the proposal adds a fourth. It states two apartments are planned on the third floor, and the second floor is to be, is proposed to be two or more apartments for retail, which now indicates the intent is to have four apartments, not just three. Mr. Weisels' proposal states his intended use for the building. Once it is built to get a conditional use permit as daily rentals. It raises the question if there's a possibility of converting the other two retail spaces to daily rentals, as they are designed with similar layout. It's provided three parking spaces for apartments, not four, giving concerns of parking design. In review of the parking design and the ingress and egress from the alley is limiting. Consideration of the snow removal and the ice conditions needed to be considered for acceptance for this proposal for three spaces. On page twelve, he lists remarks are below. Use of property, retail first floor nightly stay or second floor nightly stay, third floor, four parking spaces provided in order. From his written answers, he has stated his tendency use, his intended use is nightly rentals and not as monthly apartment rentals, as the code exception allows. He also now states there are four parking spaces when the design has only three. The additional space is listed for delivering trash. I would ask for more fair clarification on this issue. Next, he lists impacts and property values effects. He states more foot traffic, money spent in business to, um, in business to trade. Windland building improvement for safety and appearance. The concept of foot traffic businesses to business trade is when you bring something new to the business area. In this proposal, at least two-thirds of the property are now, are to be in the same industry. This is fundamental concern. He does not acknowledge that his proposal will have negative impact on the adjoining properties, and although a development of the property would be ideal, this proposal does not support most of the adjoining properties' needs and is in conflict with them. This proposal saturates the use of the land with the highest occupancy for the parking, use for parking, causing for reservation of this CUP approval. Should it be necessary and reasonable to consider that each apartment may have two cars per dwelling and will need long-term parking for all of their guests as well? Approval for this type of use in a saturated business area will strain limited parking. There will be a negative impact to some of our returning tourists' expectations, and new guests as a three-story building will affect their enjoyment and views and will affect the hotel's property values.
Thank you. Was that pretty much the end?
Uh, yeah, she has a couple more paragraphs.
Okay. I think we have it. Is there anyone else signed in to make comment on this item?
No, but I did ask Mr. Weisels to stay on the phone.
Yes, Mr. Weisels, we will put this on the floor, and then if you'll be available for questions, that would be great. Is there?
Yes, may I?
At this time, I'll close public hearing and bring it back to the commission for a motion. Do we have a motion for this resolution?
I need to, um, let pass Resolution 2020-08.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Before we get started, I wanted to make an amendment to the resolution. Currently reads two or more apartment buildings within a commercial building, and the application states that it's specifically for three-studio apartment units, so I'd like to change the title to read Resolution 2020-08 of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Seward, Alaska, granting conditional use permit to John Weisels II to construct and operate a mixed-use commercial building with three-studio apartment units located at 213 Fifth Avenue in the Central Business District.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Do we, um, do we have any discussion on the amendment? A bit of discussion. The four, the request for four would require us allowing narrower parking spaces or less, which we typically, when we have a residential unit in the past years that I've been on here, we've asked if it is going to be a residence or nightly unit, we've asked for them to provide parking or lease some off-site parking. So I don't know how I feel about making it for any more than three. It was, I think there was conflicting parts in here, so I, I, um, I'm going to vote for the amendment. Is there any other discussion on the amendment?
I would, I would just say I support it based on what you said. I think that I agree, especially in this area, that we need one parking spot per studio apartment, regardless if we're doing it nightly or monthly. Because the needs will change, most likely. But, and that's why I would limit it to three studio apartments for the parking.
Can we just clarify, I think he's listening, for retail in central businesses, if there's no parking requirement meant to be street parking, right? For nightly, it's one-to-one, one parking spot for every one unit. For long-term rentals, is it also one-to-one, or is it more?
Depends on the size and development requirement.
Okay, so that's why the five hundred square feet is a nine-point.
Okay. Any other discussion on the amendment? Since we are on line and not everybody may have YouTube, let's take a roll call vote, please.
Cease.
No.
Patfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Swan, are you still on the line?
Demas?
Yes.
Chair Eklund?
Yes.
That amendment has been approved.
Okay, so now we're on to discussion of the, Commissioner Swan, did you just come back online?
Yeah, I guess I've been able to hear you. I haven't been able to speak, so I called back you.
Oh, well, yes. I guess we could suspend the rules and have you, you, you heard us. Did you, uh, did you want to vote on the amendment to the title of Resolution 2020-08?
Can I make a comment first? I don't, you know, I had to hang up, so I don't know if I missed something.
Um, okay, so you're only listening on your phone, you're not listening on YouTube?
No, I'm not on YouTube. I couldn't figure out how to bring it up. I'm sorry.
Okay.
No, I was on my phone.
Okay, well, we, we made, we've, we've made a, a motion, and I'm going to stand with the motion. We've got four votes, yes, to amend the title to state what it stated in the conditional use, a request for three studio units. And so we changed it from two or more to three.
Okay, that's not a problem with me. My comments will, will work with the amendment.
Okay, great. So we're just now opening it up for discussion, and I'm going to open it up first to see if anyone has any questions right off the bat for the applicant, Mr. Weisels. He's still on the phone. So does anyone have a question? Kelly Patfield?
Do we, um, I was wondering the same thing as Chef Lane. It says C sheet A2.3. Do we have that somewhere for all these? Or is this, one of these plans is A2.3 that I can't tell?
On the title block, it should show what sheet.
Okay, here we go. Gotcha.
Okay. That was a question for administration. We figured about any questions for Mr. Weisels, or just let's open it up for discussion on the conditional use permit. Commissioner Swan, why don't you start us off?
Okay, so I do have a second on how we came up with the five hundred square feet. The building is thirty by sixty-five footprint, which gives us nineteen hundred and fifty square feet per floor. If we subtract out the hall, the six feet plus an extra foot for wall, seven foot, and add in an extra seventy-five feet for the stairwell, interior stairwell, that gives us five hundred and thirty feet, square feet. Subtract that from the nineteen fifty, we come up with fourteen hundred and twenty square feet. We have two utility rooms that approximately a hundred square feet. We pull those out, we end up with twelve hundred and twenty square feet, which gives us, each apartment is six hundred and ten feet. I'm wondering where the, these plans that we have in front of us are faulty in their measurements, um, because these apartments are six hundred and ten square feet, not five hundred. And so I'm kind of having a problem with the measurements, and we just well established we use the footprint, not just interior measurements of each small area and add it And the fact that, from my understanding, there are no such thing as windows that can be put on a property line, um, which meet fire. Maybe there's something out there. I've never heard of anything could do that. But in addition to that, placing windows on a property line, I think, um, create an issue when the adjacent property owner wants to build to the maximum level, because then you would have a wall directly into a window. And that would put an unfair burden on the other property owner. And I know from my own experience, windows of any type will require to be five feet away from a property. So with both things in mind, I think, um, the way this, um, CUP has been brought to us, I couldn't, I couldn't pass it, vote for it. What I would like to see is, again, a postponement from, like at last time, and have these questions answered, and I think it means a new design. That's all I have.
I'm, I'm just going to give a little input on the process. This is a start, and these are not architectural stamped drawings, plans. Even though an architect drew them, they are not stamped. Prior to a building permit being issued, the drawings would have to be stamped by an architect, and there would also have to be a structural engineer stamped approval of the plan. They would have to meet all city codes, all building codes. And you are correct, Commissioner Swan, that if you build on the lot line, which you can do in Central Business District, you cannot put a window in that wall. So if you move back from the lot line, say three feet, you can put a window for a certain percentage of the wall. This design that is presented to us tonight has no windows on the north wall. If you build on the south lot line, you can't have any windows. Where do you get your ingress and egress to apartments, to living, um, units? Because you have to have that. So, um, I, I, I think that our, our conditional use permit process only talks about the things that we can put conditions on. And then if you'll see in the Building Department section on page nine, that all building permit applications for new construction will be reviewed under currently adopted building and fire codes. And then I don't know, I, I'd like to remove one line in there, number two, at minimum structural and architectural engineer drawings are assumed to be provided, I'd like to say will be provided as part of the building permit application process. And I'd like to change it to stamped, stamped drawings are stamped somehow.
Which one number? I'm sorry.
We're on the department staff comments on page nine, under, I think it's in the agenda statement. Yeah. And I know that isn't the meat of the conditional use, but I don't want to confuse the issue that we are just the initial process. This has a long way to go from here. There's a plat. It goes to us, it goes to the borough. There's all these stamped permits and drawings and, um, other items that have to be done. I, I don't know, I mean, we have postponed this once because we did not have a good drawing, and now we've gotten another one, but it isn't, doesn't meet our current building permit process, but that's part of our building inspector's job, not the Planning and Zoning Commission per our code. We do have to determine if it is, fits in with our comprehensive plan, our strategic plan, if it meets all health and safety issues, which you could say that not building a unit that you can't have a window for ingress and egress is a safety issue, and I, I'm struggling with that one, because the way it's designed right now, we know if he builds on the south lot line, there cannot be a window, and this plan shows no windows on the north side. So, um, I, I don't see this as a safe presentation to us in this format. Any other comments? Commissioner Demas?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to point out that we did, under the conditions, in the actual conditions, number four, asked for structural and architectural stamped engineer drawings to be provided to the building.
And that's in the resolution?
Yes, it is.
Right, which is, which is the meat of our motion.
Right.
Which is in the resolution. So, um, but it doesn't say stamp.
It does.
Oh, there it is.
Number four, number three, at third dot.
So, um, we, we have put some meat in here. It, this is the initial process, so I'd like to hear from the rest of the commission. Thank you, Mr. Swan, for your concern. Anyone else have a comment? Commissioner Demas?
I would say that, is there a way we can put a maximum square footage on the studio apartments to make sure it stays at five hundred in a way to accept the drawings that have been presented to us and to pass this CUP tonight for it to move forward? I guess I would want to see a limit on the square footage so we can feel good about just knowing that there's only going to be three studio apartments with three spaces. And then, I guess, addressing the window issue on the south side of the wall in order to accept the building. I know, I think he's looking at possibly using the same foundation if possible, but is there a way to impose a setback on that side if he wanted to have the windows still? And to, that would allow for the neighbors to the south to build to their zero lot line with a safe. with a safety measure put in place, if there's a setback or something. Or does that get held up after building permit, or at the building permit point?
We can't answer all those questions. So the five-hundred square foot is a development requirement for studio apartments. It is said in code. So if something came forward to us that didn't meet that, that was over that square footage, it would be denied for those purposes. So those are areas in the code that we have changed over the last couple of years to meet those smaller apartment requirements. So it is stated in there. We don't need to put it into your conditions.
Okay.
And then, as far as the window concern, again, that is an area that, yes, we're concerned about it, but when it gets to the building department, these stamped engineer drawings, they're going to, you know, the engineer's going to have to look at it, but wait a minute, this is a zero lot line, and if the person next to me is going to build, then, you know, so talking to the building department and the building inspector, he stated the same thing. Those are things that he looks at, that he would have to require if a building permit is presented.
Okay. I'm a little confused about the mixing of terminology by Mr. Weisell, which may be not reading the city code where we made some new definitions for apartment and studio. And so you've used, you've interchanged those. And so, Mr. Weisell, is your intent to have apartments or studio units?
Our intent is to have studio units, and that's why we acknowledge the five-hundred square feet or less, because we found out about that number, and that's why we acknowledge it, and place that on our plan.
Okay.
But, go ahead, sorry.
No, I, you know, we all struggle with how many different definitions we have for lodging in our code, and it's part of our plan to take on those.
Yeah, and it's just a concept design, you know? It's not set in stone. We're just trying to get a concept up there. You know, we have plans for egress on the street and the alleys, but that's all up to the building official. But we just wanted to note the key points of five-hundred square feet, the amount of parking spaces. And I think everyone should listen that we noted that we're extremely flexible on going with three retail units and three studios. If the stressor was that everyone's afraid of having four studios and two retailers. And who's to say that we, you know, someone might want a larger retail space? We're just putting it out there that we're flexible with the building design as it builds up. But we noted the key rules of parking and space for units and stuff like that.
All right. To the administration, have we in the past changed the parking width for anything other than Safeway?
No, we have not.
For no residential units? Okay, so.
Not for residential. We have changed that requirement to point-six-five for hotels, you know, down in the harbor, but not up here, I mean, not downtown because of the parking issue.
Right.
I haven't seen any.
Okay. So I'm comfortable with staying with the three parking spaces in the back, and then the amendment changing the title to three studio units.
Now, I do remember back, just a year ago, we worked on a CUP for a building right across from the library, and those parking, those parking requirements came into play there too. And we required, you guys required that they keep those facts, partial parking.
I have another question to administration. Have we ever had a work session on a CUP that involved the building department, the historic preservation, the council, and the commission?
No, ma'am, we haven't. Normally, the process, we go through the code process and then we bring it to you, but I, not, not in the history that I've researched have we had that.
And I started working for the city in ninety-eight, and I can't remember.
I can make a comment on that.
Is that you, Mr. Swan?
Yes, yes.
Go ahead.
When I did my CUP, I never followed through on, for Swan Nest, we did have a work session, and if I recall at that time, it was a regular practice to have a work session on anything that was a little bit involved.
Wait, you're kind of breaking up. Could you repeat? Who was all involved?
Basically, it was just, it was basically just me and the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Oh, on Swan's Nest?
On Swan's Nest, and it was a CUP that I never followed through on.
Okay.
But I had plans turned in and stuff like that, and, I mean, it's just a matter of the builder, which at that time was me, and planning and zoning, would discuss these items rather than having it in a B.
Oh, okay.
Comment, since I'm on the phone talking, I appreciate your comments as far as the development process, and I agree with you on that type of thing, and I do look forward. I think this is a great building. I think it's very good for the area. And I, after you've made your comments, I agree that I think I would vote for it to go forward.
Okay. I know that we are going to be working with the Historic Preservation Commission, which is an advisory commission to the city. It's not required by code, but we honor it and want their input. And we have had aesthetics from before us in the past for years, and it's gone the gamut, run the gamut of telling people what color buildings, they can paint their buildings, if we're not going to allow any fast food units and wear, and, you know, this, this building is in the historic district, correct?
Correct.
Yes. There are other buildings in that district I think that are of similar design or not historic, like New Seward Hotel with its little cornices, or some of the other buildings around, I mean, we have the Petro Marine Building. Is that what it's called, Petro Building? We have this building, the library. If you look at City Hall, that's more of a nineteen-sixty, seventy.
Nineteen-sixty-five.
Sixty building. When they built the new First National Bank, they tore down a very historic building and built that building. And so I know that it's a goal of the Historic Preservation to put some more meat into the code to protect some of the areas. And I was thinking about it in our earlier work session, if we cover up that part of the shoreline where there was a lot of history, and the cribbing and the piers that are out there, that's, that's historic, and I'm not even not like that. So, you know, but we don't have that meat in our code, and as this commission, we are required to follow our code. And until we can change our code to add those things, I think this is before us tonight, and we don't have any ordinances in the works even to start limiting what can, cannot be in our historic district. So we can work towards that, but as it sits tonight, I don't think we have that meat. Any more discussion on Resolution twenty-twenty-zero-eight? Commissioner Hatfield.
Just a question for administration. Is there any sort of verification requirements in CBD?
No.
I think there wasn't.
Yeah, zero lot line.
Right.
Yeah, and that's something, I mean, again, we discussed in the past, you know, where do you guys want to draw the line in that historic areas in the, you know, keeping with the zero lot lines? You know, those requirements are not in our code. They're, they're just plans and ideas for down the road, so.
Well, I am going to throw this out there. If the design that's in here is what comes forward as a stamped architectural design with a blank north wall. When people want to put murals on walls in our town, does the mural society get some consensus from surrounding properties before they put one of those up?
Yes, ma'am, they do.
Okay. Because there's windows on the south side of the hotel, and I would not want something, you know? And I'm sure Mr. Weisell would work with the mural society and the surrounding properties on that. Okay, any further comments?
Can anyone still hear me?
Yes, Mr. Weisell, if you have any final comments or rebuttal, please, we'll give you a few minutes.
Yeah, my final comments were, is we're just looking forward to get approval on this process, so that we can get into more detail with, because it's like, it's like they said, it's a long road to meet, and we're trying to push admirably to build this building. But I'd also like to, after hearing the concern, I don't know these people, but if you could share with them my name and number, you know, the historic society, they would like to meet with me. I'm more than willing to open and meet with them and see if they have any input on our looks of our building. And then also with the mural society, love art, love murals, if they want to get in on some of the, say, on the design, that would be more than willing to be shared. But I'd reach out to these people, but feel free to share my name and number, I guess, Eric, or anyone that has my information.
Thank you, Mr. Weisell.
That's it, I'm sorry.
Can I respond for him?
Yeah. Community Development Director, Wild.
Mr. Weisell, the Historic Preservation meets on the first Thursday of every month, and they're meeting this Thursday, and I will gladly pass on your information to them.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure the mural society has some input they'd like to give on how, what the building consists of for them to be able to attach the mural. So thank you for allowing Eric to give your information to the mural society. At this time, unless there's any further discussion, I'll call for a roll call vote on Resolution twenty-twenty-zero-eight.
Hatfield.
This is only amended.
The amended.
This is amended.
Yes. Resolution is amended. Hatfield, Dees Demas.
Yes.
Cease.
Yes.
Swan.
Yes.
Chair Ekland.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-zero-eight has passed.
All right, back to the agenda. Takes us to, I think it's a new public hearing item on the renaming of the road. New business item requiring a public hearing, seven-B two, Resolution twenty-twenty-eleven of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Seward, Alaska, recommending city council approve the renaming of the north-south right-of-way, currently known as Rush Loop Two, Dunham Drive, located within the Gateway subdivision. Staff report, please.
Madam Chair, as we all know, Willard Dunham had history of extraordinary public service along with extensive authority contribution to the city. The city has entered into an assessment district with the owner, majority owner of Gateway subdivision, and at the time, we're discussing, the plaque itself is, still says that it's Phoenix Loop. And then in eighty-six, they just picked a name. There's no history for that name, just to put, to change it, so for nine-one-one purposes. In discussing with the owner, majority owner of Gateway, and then also talking to other people that are buying there and building there, we originally proposed Dunham's Way or Dunham Loop, and one of the owners, Mr. and Mrs. Ganzer, came up with the name Dunham Drive. We liked the sound of it. And in order for us to change the name legally, we need to pass it by the resolution through planning, zoning, and through council. And that's why this is in front of you this evening.
Do we have anyone signed in to speak on this item?
We received an email from the Ganzers, just wanting to let the commission know their support of this resolution.
Okay. Any other comments on this item? Seeing a hearing done, I will close public hearing and bring it back to the commission for a motion. Commissioner Demas.
I'll make a motion to pass twenty-twenty-eleven.
Motion by Demas seconded by Hatfield. Discussion?
I like that. I think it sounds nice.
I have one question, because I've been on the Borough Planning Commission, and with this nine-eleven call thing, they have, if a road goes north-south, it has to be a street. If it goes east-west, it has to be avenue. If it's a loop, it has to be named Loop. If it's a cul-de-sac, it's, so, does it meet the borough?
It meets the borough standards for a drive.
That's all I needed to know, otherwise it'll just come back to us and we'll have to change it at the local level. Okay, any other comments? All right, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Hatfield.
Yes.
Swan.
Yes.
Cease.
Yes.
Demas.
Yes.
Chair Ekland.
Yes.
That motion has been passed, approved.
Thank you. That takes us to, I made on business, business, we don't have any new business on a, set a joint work session with Historic Preservation Commission for November third, twenty-twenty.
So, Madam Chair, we, you as a commission, had voted to agree to these quarterly meetings with Historic Preservation. I just sort of wanted to go over, we always set a topic, and even though this is just an hour, because this is new for even Historic Preservation, to be able to be in a work session with you guys, one of the things that I suggested is that for this first hour, this first meeting, to, you know, explain to them, they are confused on a lot of portions of when it comes to how do we get code to be able to be entered into the, into, into city code. And so just giving them a brief overview of how, how that process looks, and, you know, one of the things that planning and zoning and community development, Eric and I, have been talking about is, you know, we have a historic district, and we have, in other cities and other areas, it's not just one big block on a map, it's, you know, you have a historic downtown district, you have a historic housing district. And so those are, I think, the direction that HP is wanting to lead, and we can help them in that process. And so I think that it would be a really good meeting just to go over as a topic how code and process works in a historic district even, just, so. That's why we put it on there.
And so, an introduction to code development, and it's six p.m. prior to our regular meeting on November third?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct? Okay.
It will be in this meeting, in this one.
It's the, we have a November third regular planning and zoning.
Oh, so we went from Thursday to night to November third?
No, no. Historic Preservation is meeting, their meeting's on Thursday night.
Right.
Our quarterly meeting with them is going to be on November third.
Okay.
And you can go to both. All right, we can all go to both. Let's see. Then item nine-B, is everyone clear on the, okay, nine-B, set a work session topic for October twentieth, which is our next meeting. And we had a brief, some brief ones at the last meeting. Did we come up with a plan for those, or are we going to continue on those?
Well, you know, we talked about our definitions in short-term rentals, but we could look at that as definitions with lodging, housing, and dwellings, just so that they become separated and understand what. just so that we may get them separated and understand what each is supposed to be, and maybe look forward, and we'll have some, I have already done the research on the lodging, short-term, whether it's owner-operated or.
Property managed.
Property managed. So I have some information on that. We could look at some of the other definitions and see where we want to go.
Okay, will we have some examples for how other Kenai Peninsula communities are handling those?
Not just Kenai, but Alaska communities, yes.
Okay, that'd be great. And I think that that is bringing a lot of confusion. I'm not in the real estate department, I'm sure, and housing, and the, you know.
We have 14 different definitions, guys, of dwelling.
Yeah, so I think that's a good topic. We've already approved 9C under the consent agenda. Item 10.
We're setting up this joint work session with Historic Preservation.
Yes.
On November 3, that's election day. Is that going to make a conflict?
We have the meeting in the library, just as we're doing tonight on election night.
Okay.
We'll all have voted by then. Thanks for that clarification, Tom. Yeah, we'll be back in this room on November 3. Item 10, informational items and reports. We have a planning, zoning commission newsletter, the FEMA Region 10 newsletter, the 2020 Planning and Zoning Meeting schedule, and city calendars. And so we, this pretty one that we have with the colors, and we'll add now where the quarterly ones are.
A new purple color.
A new purple, okay. Half purple, half green on that first, yeah, okay. Any other admin items they want to highlight in the informational items?
There's not any items in the informational items, but one of the resources that has come available to you as a planning, zoning commission and me through APA, is some possible trainings that we can do via Zoom and/or in them. So just look for that in the future. I'm looking at probably at least three that are an hour long. And I think it's a really great way to incorporate how we're doing our style with how everyone else in the planning does their stuff.
As long as they're not at East Coast 8:00 AM.
No, no.
And 4:00 AM for us, then we have that, okay. That takes us to 11, commission comments. I'm going to start with Commissioner Swan. Do you have any comments tonight on the closing?
I just like to apologize for missing the last work session. Our grandson was in the process of being born, and I missed the meeting.
Oh, I guess we'll forget.
You're excused, I guess. Another jewel in your crown there, though, but, let's see. Commissioner Hatfield? Commissioner De Mas?
No.
Commissioner Cease?
No, I've been quiet.
You, yeah. I have one more closing comment from the Kenai Peninsula Borough Planning Commission, because at our last meeting, there was a resolution to approve leasing communication tower sites on the Kenai Peninsula, five of them. And two sites was property owned by a Kenai Peninsula borough, and one of them is the Bear Creek Fire Station. And so some questions were asked about the tower placement and things. And Commissioner Vannuti, who is the chair, who's on the Borough Planning Commission and is the chair of the Homer Planning and Zoning Commission, stated that the best practice regarding the location of tower sites is to place the towers in such a way that if they were to collapse, it would not damage property on neighboring lots. And then he asked Mr. Mueller, who is the acting planning director for the borough, if this statement was going to be followed with the towers that it spits and spots, it's the Homer Communication Tower. And would this standard be followed for the towers that are going in? And Mr. Mueller replied that the tower company selected the sites and the borough reviewed the sites to ensure that the activities were compatible with site management. Mr. Mueller also stated that the only tower close to a property line was the Bear Creek Tower, and that particular, that particular site is over an acre in size. The tower company is required to carry commercial general liability insurance listing the Kenai Peninsula borough as an additional insured on all towers, so the borough would not be liable in that unlikely event for the tower collapse. So I'm sure that we are going to require that. The general liability enlists us as an additional insured on anything, but I thought it was just something that we should be aware of. There's towers going in outside of city limits and.
Would that, that property that's near, the property line is nearby there, would putting a tower there first, would that keep them from building on that portion of their property? Because it would then be within the.
Well, I, if you.
Towers collapse.
This tower is pretty close to the building. It is on the back side of the lot. And I think it's going to be up against the hill somewhat. And so if it fell on the hill, there's nothing really there, but if it fell in the fire department.
Like, so if the people that own that property decided they wanted to clear that hillside and build like a pad and build a cabin there or something, would they not be allowed to do that because it would be within the collapsing area of the Skull Tower?
Well, I think at the one meeting we had, that one of the, someone, it might have been Eric, said that most of the towers are built to collapse downward.
Or swing downward.
Swing downward, which would, but, you know, we have hurricane, force winds, earthquakes, and tsunamis. Who knows where the tower would go? So I'm still concerned about communication tower placement in the city. I was just at my hometown in Crosby, Minnesota, which is pretty flat. And I'm driving down Main Street, looking at the sign, Crosby, Minnesota, established 1910. And right behind that is a 100-foot communications tower. Just ugly, it was. It was, there was no trying to blend in or anything, it was just, oh, right there, so. Okay, those are my comments. Any citizens' comments on any of it?
I thought that was a very interesting meeting. I think, you know, a while ago, I think last year, I came in front of the board and I said, density, how are we looking at density in the future? How are we looking at density in buildings? And how do we envision Seward having density and expanding and growing? So one, I'm really happy that it was passed, that Dunham Drive is going to be there, because I live up there, and that's a great addition to that area. Also with density, I think one thing that we like, kind of always think about, and it's like, we always talk about, is parking. And I always thought maybe a work session on parking, I mean, like, what are the solutions to parking? Because when we went to AML in the winter, last winter, we were talking, economic development, people were going to say, is parking stifling your businesses from growing? Or new businesses coming, or whatever? What is, what are the calls that are inhibiting business from occurring in town? Or progress from occurring in town? And I always thought a really good solution was the railroad property that's right off the highway that they keep trying to lease, and nobody wants to lease. I thought, like, in the summertime, why can't you just have the bus pull over there? And there's like porta-potties in the summer, and people can park there. With a little bit of signage, people could park there, take the bus that's already running in town, and come into town. Maybe with a little bit of signage, we could get less people driving into town. It's like, oh, the parking for the shuttle downtown is here, and that, you know, and then people could come in that way. And maybe that's just a partnership with the railroad, and they could charge, like, $2 or $3 or whatever, because I'm sure you're going to have that insurance on there just to pay for the parking. But also creating walkable areas downtown and maybe eliminating some parking sometimes might, you know, a lot of people, it showed it in big cities, where people were like, no, we don't want to eliminate the parking because people aren't going to come down here. And the adverse effect really happened when they took the parking away. It created a more walkable area for people, were more drawn to that. And then it also created more opportunities for businesses within the parking area, where there was like food trucks, or like little stalls, or whatever. And maybe it's not that, but it's maybe just lightening the congestion that's already downtown with another parking solution. I don't want to necessarily see a big piece of land turn into a parking lot, but I feel that that area that's outside on the railroad property is kind of perfect and set up for that. And with them just redoing that little thing, the road that goes over that railroad, it's much more accessible. So just thinking, maybe there could be a work session about parking or parking solutions, how people feel about parking, and how businesses or citizens feel about how parking or those things may be stifling progress in the city. So that is my opinion zoning, out of the council. But I want to thank you all for your hard work, because I think you have more meetings coming up than we do. So thank you for all of your hard work and dedication to the city. And it's not unnoticed how much you all do for the citizens of Seward, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boquon. And. Can I respond to that really quick?
Yes.
One of the things, I love that idea. We have had two parking means, two parking work sessions since I've been in planning. You know, we were really defeated at our last one, because we were expecting a lot of turnout, and it was just us. So that, you know, we've got to figure out another way to get that. But just talking about the walkability, you know, those are huge grant opportunities that we lose out on every year, because we don't have the walkability portion of planning in our, in our code and the ability to apply for these grants. But I was in Crestview a couple months ago, and they specifically shut down one of their historic areas. They tried it for a summer, they tried, one portion they wanted just to put, they did a Saturday market, and they put up Bear Creek. And then they went, this year, they blocked off the whole section. And they have had more, I mean, the businesses were able to put outside dining because of COVID. But they, you had such an interaction, and it was amazing, because I was like, where are they parking? Like, and they did the same thing. They contributed and made a parking area, and people bust in. They got on a bus and came in, or they walked the streets and got to it. So it is something that I would like to see us work for in the future. But every year, I see these walkable grants, and we just.
Can we add that to the work session, to talk about that? The walkability and getting grant information on that? Like, what kind of grants, and how much, and things like that?
Well, I'll just put it out there, ARF gives $50,000 to the state of Alaska every year, and nobody ever applies for it.
Well, I think if you open it up, if you tell people that we're considering opening something up for just a walkable space, you're making a lot of opinions, and that's where we can get the parking discussion kind of started.
Well, I think, I think it would be, I mean, the discussion of definitions is going to fill your whole work session, but we could definitely bring it forward to another work session and do.
Yeah, I think it's such an interesting idea, especially if there's ever a time to test that out, like Tony said, it would be COVID time, you know? And you can kind of blame it on that, to kind of fill it out and see what it did for our town. So I think it's interesting. But I could definitely see some strong opinions on it.
And I'll gladly send everybody just the different layouts and the different, the different grants that I've looked into for walkability, just generals.
Might comment on the parking was, when we were looking at, and I don't know when we're going to look at this again, the rec camp plan. Some of my thoughts, and I think I expressed it, was that if we had the parking over on that railroad property, we wouldn't have to put a bunch of parking on the rec site plan. The issue is getting across the state highway. And we have been one ton of lumber, and it doesn't get a lot of use. I don't know if we made it in the wrong spot or what. And I don't know if we could ever get another one. I don't think we want one over. But if the shuttle could swing through this economic development area, whatever is going to happen, a rec area, whatever is going to happen at that, those properties, I think that would be a good addition.
Well, and it is something, you know, the crossing of the highway. Those are discussions that are happening during the Miles Road and 99 Highway discussions that we're having another meeting in a month, because we just had one. But those, those are topics that keep being brought up, like, wait a minute, you know, we've been trying for years to get a crosswalk across it, you know, even on Jefferson. So those are all things that we've entered in to this plan. Like, these are the things that Seward needs, and so we could enter that into the portion too.
Yeah, if our first stoplight is for pedestrians, oh, you know, press the button, stop the traffic. Okay. Any other commission, administration response? All right, I'll pick a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
So moved. At 8:30. Thanks, Commissioner Swan. I just want to take these masks off. I don't know how people do it.